Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Please call the roll.
Winters.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Dowling.
Here.
Swallow.
There.
Bear.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September 18, 2023. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting on September 28, 2023. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $485,670.14 in payroll expenses of $239,642.39.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mrs. Bear to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Bear.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Dowling.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. Planning commission meeting was not one. Hospital authority meeting. Mr. Bowman.
Okay. They are looking into a mental wellness program for the homestead. It's Senior Life Solutions. That is ongoing right now. Patient Point has been installed at all the clinics where a patient can give feedback of the services performed at that time. Dr. Daniels took a full-time position in Texas, so the hunt is on for a new doctor surgeon. And working on a management agreement between Beatles and Sharon. That is an ongoing process. And that's about it, other than routine business.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Bowman?
How long do we have the surgeon here for? He's already just started up your long term.
Any other questions? Thank you, Greg. Next item is the Alba Public Library Board Meeting on October 9, 2023. Mr. Dowling.
The director mentioned that the staff has been working on de-selecting materials that have been checked out, that have not been checked out in the last 10 years. The year is being evaluated currently are adult fiction and biographies. The new nonfiction materials and biographies are being selected and researched to replace those. The freeing up of space in the fiction area will make room for new books, as the bookshelves were very crowded. The After Mouse digital play table arrived at the library will be placed in the youth library after spring break. The table was purchased with funds from the Friends of the Library group. The Friends of the Library will be holding a meeting on Monday, October 23 at 7:30. They have scheduled the Chocolate Fantasy and More Auction to be held November the 9th. They also wanted to need to highlight that the Dolly Fortin's Imagination Library is available, and they have flyers around town and a QR code, so you can sign up on that.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for Mr. Dowling? Thanks, Taylor. Next item is the Alba Arena Authority Meeting on October 9. I thought they had met, but maybe.
She said they did.
Well, we don't have the information, so we'll get to that for the next one.
Okay.
All right. Next item is Tourism Tax Committee Meeting on, I don't have the date. But Sadie.
I missed the last meeting, which was right after council, because I was at a, I think I was at the conference. And, but they did vote to approve the Northwestern rodeo team request, and then we have our next meeting this Wednesday at 5:30. And I'll report back next month on that.
Any questions for Mrs. Bear? Thank you. There was no Alba Board of Adjustments meeting. The Alba Regional Airport Commission meeting on October 10. I will say that we do have a couple items on this agenda relevant to that meeting, so I won't go over those. But other than routine business, we did look at investing some of our cash into the pooled investment account as well as into CDs. So, any questions regarding that? And I'll give an update on the lighting project is, has a schedule. We did receive a report from the engineers on that. So, we're hopeful that by the time all the prep work that needs to go into place for all three phases of that lighting project, by the time that prep work's complete, we anticipate having the lighting fixtures on hand and being able to proceed. Derek, you have anything you want to add on that?
No.
Okay. Any questions regarding the airport meeting? Recreation Complex Board Meeting on October 11, 2023. Mrs. Swallow.
It was a routine agenda, but one of the other things that they discussed was the electric bill and the baseball fields.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Item I is Alba Municipal Cemetery Meeting. Mr. Ford, can you give us an update on that?
I was not going to ask. I didn't.
Finance Committee Meeting on October 16. Mr. Winters.
All right, I'm going to try to keep this kind of short. So, when you look at our total cash balance, we're at 3.89 million. And then our investment balance is sitting at, that's a different paper, I don't have it all the time here, sitting at just over 4, so 4.18 million. That's the largest sum of cash and investment City of Alba has had, at least in the last eight years. So, we're continuing in the right direction financially. The rest of the numbers are pretty well where they've been at over the past several months, with kind of the same issues with some of the transfers. That's the other thing, we still have not had to make a transfer from the Utility Authority into the General Fund. We thought we were going to last month, we ended up not. We're still looking like we might have to this month, but we do budget for there to be effectively at 100, 200,000, somewhere in there, per month, in transfer from the Utility Authority that we haven't had to do yet so far. So, sales tax numbers look good. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Winters? Thank you, Dana. Mayor's Report. Had a really good municipal league conference, annual conference down in Oklahoma City. It was the largest attended conference for the municipal league to date, so it's been, OML's been in existence for over 100 years, and this was a pretty big event for municipal leaders from across the state to get together. We did have opportunity to, between Mr. Ford and Mrs. Swallow and Mrs. Bear and I, to visit with a lot of folks out there that provide services to municipalities, and we'll probably have some of those conversations at some point result in, you know, consideration by council. I had a lot of conversations about, you know, financing opportunities and grant opportunities, you know, and so I feel pretty strongly we're going to see some of that stuff come back and come up as we get more information. But, other than that, it's been a great time in Alba as well. We had Ranger Homecoming, always brings in a great ton of people. We had Goldbug Homecoming, and there's just been a lot of activity here in town here lately, and so it's a good time to be in Alba. And I'll entertain any questions you guys might have. Mr. Ford, Business Manager's Report.
Okay, so I'll start off with, make sure everybody understands, we did postpone shutting off the water mains tomorrow after this weekend. Our water supply town is too depleted for us to turn that off and have any reasonable expectation of having any water in town. So, we're going to wait probably till next Tuesday, that'll give us time to get our water towers filled back up, where when we shut down, we should have at least 24 hours' worth of water for the city while we do the necessary tie-ins for all the new lines. I said we're planning on next Tuesday, we'll see. It's a plan by ear, and we're going to make sure that all the conditions are set for success before we do it. Because we really, really don't want to do it, we don't have a choice to do it. So, I think everybody has probably seen it, if you haven't seen it, you can go over and look at it. We got our new mini exit that we voted on a couple months ago. We picked it up last Friday morning, and by Friday evening, we were digging a hole in Locust Street with it to fix up the water leak. So, it didn't even make it 24 hours before it got dirty. And then after Saturday and Sunday, it's really dirty now. So, but, it's already been a huge help, and it's really a great piece of gear. Let's see, so had a meeting last week with meter installers. Right now, we're sitting at 700 or 2900. They're right now projected to install 290 per week to finish, they're trying to finish around November 29. Hopefully, they finish before that, so they can go home Thanksgiving. But they brought in another installer, so now we have four installers in town getting that done. Usually, they can get about 20 a day per person. So, that would help speed that up a little bit, but they may work a few Saturdays in between there if they need to catch up a little bit, just to try to stay ahead. But like I said, the plan is to be done no later than tomorrow night in November for that, which is good news, get this thing done. And tomorrow morning, after this meeting, I'm getting on the road from the city to go down to the OWRB meeting tomorrow for the, they'll be discussing our loan application for the 5-plus million dollars we approved last month for the water infrastructure improvements. And that's all of that.
Council, any questions for Mr. Ford?
So, that's on the 24th, that they're going to shut the mains down?
Yeah. Generally, like I said, if things aren't right, they're not right, they're not going to do it. So.
I'll tell you, on the water meter installers, one of them saw, drove by a house, and I had my real estate sign out, and they called and asked about them, and they said that they've worked in a lot of communities and work in Alba. They said, "It's such a nice place, we're, I'm thinking about moving my family here, I just thought that was kind of cool that they enjoyed working here so much," that one of them said they were thinking about moving here. So.
Our large tower, you know, with the horses on it, that can only be used when there's a boil order still, or is it that?
No.
We need to get it open.
It's open.
We took care of that a year or two ago.
Any other questions, Mr. Ford? All right, thank you. Item number seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. What we're going to try to do here is, I understand a lot of people have some remarks they'd like to share with council. I would ask that if you do have remarks, if you're able, please come to the podium and tell us who you are, and we'll give you two minutes to share your remarks. And I will ask, as we go through this, just in the sake of time, we'll see how it goes. I mean, we'll play a little bit by ear, but if multiple people want to say the same thing, I have no problem with you guys saying what she said, or what he said, or, you know, and just show your support in that way, or your opposition, or whatever. But we do want to hear what everybody has to say, but if we're, if we get to where everybody's saying the same thing, we'll just, in this, for the sake of time, we'll speed it up that way. But, who wants to go first?
We'll go first. Does my two men start like right when it starts? Debate mode, sorry.
I forgot. It used to be Randy Stelling that was on the timer, and I forgot that he's not here anymore, so.
No, debate mode, it's like when you say the first word, so. All right. Hi, I'm Kristy Vickers, a founding member of the nonprofit Alba Friends of Play Foundation. I'm here tonight with several of our members to speak on behalf of our organization. I want to share with the city council our position on the swimming pool project. Our foundation has actively partnered with the city for almost 15 years. We've raised over $115,000 to replace and repair playground equipment at Hatfield Park. We have pledged $24,500 toward the master plan work being done for the Kimley Harm Firm for Hatfield Park. Tricia Codey, another, Cody, another founding member, and I both serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the swimming pool project. Our foundation represents children, families, and visitors to our community. The swimming pool project is extremely important to all citizens who live, work, and play in our community. Swimming encourages fitness for community members of all ages and abilities. Childhood obesity continues to rise, and a public pool is the best way to get kids to exercise outdoors. Families have gone from daily trips to our community pool, where we bond and strengthen our ties, to spending time and money in another town with strangers. With a quality park system, including a viable pool, Alba will attract visitors, new residents, and businesses. With drowning as the number one cause of death among children under age four, access to swimming lessons will save lives. Our community has a responsibility to provide facilities for Alba to be a safe, progressive, family-friendly place to live. Our organization appreciates the council's vote of approval supporting the finance plan developed by the Citizens Advisory Committee over the past two years on our community's behalf. Thank you.
30 minutes for 30 seconds, just fair.
You ready to reset? Okay. My name's Melinda Barton, and I am here tonight speaking, I'm reading a statement for my husband, he's in Nebraska, on a work trip, it's a fun place to be, he said it was cold there. And, so anyway, I wanted to just read his statement that he wrote. "I've served on each of the three pool committees established by the mayor since 2019. I'm committed not only to seeing this project to completion, but also to serving on the committee for the continuing revitalization of Hatfield Park. As a child, I spent many hours at the pool and also in Hatfield Park. It was important, it is important for me that future generations of Alba's children have the same opportunity. It is an injustice to the children of our community to further delay the swimming lessons and the enjoyment of summer afternoons at the pool. It puts our restaurants, our convenience stores, and businesses and so forth as a disadvantage when parents take their families out of town to enjoy a swimming experience. These people are buying fuel, eating out, and shopping in other communities and not here at home. The project falls within the guidelines of the Economic Development Project per the ordinances of the City of Alba. The Parks and Recreation Board will oversee the project and the pool operations, and the gap financing will be paid for by the sales tax that is currently in place for the Parks and Rec Board. Over the past several years, the citizens of Alba have had multiple opportunities to provide feedback on this project. The committee incorporated this feedback into the current pool design. The pool size has been right-sized to our community's needs, and all of the grant funding that has been approved for this project is based on the size of the pool as it is, not to exceed $5 million. At this point, a delay in approving the gap funding will jeopardize the grant funds, and we will get less for our money due to rising construction costs. Going backwards, going back to the drawing board will not only cause a further delay in providing this pool to our citizens for their enjoyment, but will also jeopardize the already-approved funds." Is that two minutes? Wow! Okay, so anyway.
It's up all these good.
Yeah, he is, he's slam winning. So, anyway, and I totally backed up what he said, so I'm speaking for both of us.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I have the 30 seconds back?
Who else? Regarding, for public comments, Mr. Sutter, you're on the agenda.
Okay.
If you want to talk about something other than the agenda, I don't.
I just have a quick comment. This, I'm Allison Picko, and I have really appreciated being on this committee with a plethora of personalities and opinions, and I have seen all of them disagree in the same room, and then come together with the, not necessarily the, but our what has always stayed the same, and it's just been a really great experience, besides what you normally hear about these kind of experiences. It's really been a great one, so we really do appreciate your approval and support, too.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Thank you all for being here. And, item eight on the agenda. Discussion, consideration, and take appropriate action, including but not limited to approval, denial, amendment, revision, or conditional approval in whole or in part of approving a resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma. The city approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Alba Economic Development Authority, the authority issuing its sales tax revenue note, Series 2023. The note providing that the organizational document creating the authority is subject to the provisions of the note indenture authorizing the issuance of said note, approving and authorizing the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said note, approving and authorizing a sales tax agreement by and between the city and the authority pertaining to the year-to-year pledge of certain sales tax revenue, establishing the city's reasonable expectation with respect to the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by or on behalf of said city in calendar year 2023, and designating the note as a qualified tax-exempt obligation and containing other provisions relating thereto. So, this, this is essentially the gap funding that was mentioned in the public comments to be able to complete the swimming pool project, or to be able to go out to bid for the swimming pool project. The financing was bid out, and I don't know, we have Chris Gander with us that can explain the process or answer any questions regarding the loan bid, but, and you can correct me if I misstate anything here, but we did go out for bid on the note. We received two bids. One of them was not able to be considered because it did not meet the bid requirements. One of the bid requirements was that whatever loan that they proposed would have the ability to be paid off early. The MidFirst Bank was the bank that made that bid at 5.8%, 5.7% with no provision for early payoff. Alba State Bank bid at 5.35% with a provision for early payoff. And so, the only bid that we have to consider on the financing is the Alba State Bank at 5.35%. That's, is that accurate? All right. The rest of the resolutions in here are necessary for the borrowing of the sum of money, the 1.6 million dollars that we're borrowing is the gap between what's been pledged or donated versus what somebody mentioned in their public comment, the $5 million max that the committee and Parks and Rec Board are wanting to spend on the pool. And so, that 1.6 makes up the gap between what we have pledged or received and what we need in order to go out for bid. That, I will, I will say that in terms of the sales tax provisions in here, this is not a new sales tax, this is the sales tax that is currently in place for Parks and Recreation. It is a half-cent sales tax, it's been in place since 1999. It was originally in place to construct the recreation complex, and that paid off in 2021. It's either '21 or '22. And, and so, it is, it is unencumbered at this time, and it is available for us to use for this purpose. I think that is the majority of the information about the note in particular. I think that this has been a conversation, the pool has been a conversation since 2018 and what we were going to do, and this is the next step in being able to move forward to going out for construction bids. So, with that, we have council discussion, or I would entertain a motion?
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-020, as stated in the agenda, provided for all provisions and actions and statements made.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Winters and a second for Mrs. Swallow to approve Resolution 2023-020, as stated in item number eight in the agenda. Is there any further discussion?
What is the payout, early payoff provision exactly? What is it stated?
No penalty at any time. And that's what we had requested. Some of the others had some kind of big premium, you could prepay them, but our request was prevable anytime at all.
Okay.
Is there a way, and I don't know, maybe it isn't there, but I mean, I'm okay with, I think it's great, I think we need a pool, I'd like to see something that this is all future not-restricted donations and grants go to early payoff of the note?
I think we can do that, and in the conversations I had, after, after learning that was a priority, the conversations I've had with the people in the committee and Parks and Rec Board, that would be a priority of theirs as well.
Does that need to be in the motion, or to amend? That's the most important thing.
Well, we've already got a motion, so we have to vote on that. The motion doesn't stand right now.
Could the person who made that motion amend their motion?
I think, I know we've run into that in the past, usually my stance on that is to vote on, because it's already been, motion's been made and seconded already, so I would say it means to be voted on, as it is.
Can, I mean, if, if it's voted on and voted down, could a new motion be made?
Yes.
That contains that language that says all future not-restricted donations and grants will be used for the early payoff?
Yes.
Can you, so when you say not, not restricted?
So, I mean, if someone calls and says, "I want to donate 500,000 for this piece of equipment," well, we're going to do what they ask. I mean, but if there's, if we just get a grant that can be used, it's just for the swimming pool, it's not for a specific purpose, I'd like to see it go towards the note.
So, the project's capped at 5 million in the resolution?
Is the, is the project capped at 5 million in the resolution?
I thought, I thought that's what I've seen or heard, and that's why I wasn't concerned about that. We can book this down and add that, but it may be. I'm not opposed to that request.
Steve, could we pull up the resolution on the screen?
Yeah.
See, normally in these resolutions, I mean, this is just really pertaining to the financing, so it's really a cap on the financing, which is just the 1,675.
There was something to cap the project at 5.
Yeah, the committee voted to cap the project at 5.
It's just not in this, but yeah, you might have done it somewhere else.
The committee did vote to cap it at 5. The committee would obviously, in the way the bid documents are set up, there would, we don't ever know until we get the bids, so I can't say how bids are going to come in. But they did try to structure the bid packet so that there would be alternates that allowed us to at least have a base bid to construct a swimming pool, with alternates to add amenities to the pool as have been planned and drawn out. So, yes, the committee, but if all those bids come in over, I mean, that's going to have to be reconsidered. But I would, I would support saying that undesigned contributions to the pool project pay down the debt. I would support, I mean, I think that's, do we have to say it? No. If we want to say it, we can.
My thing is, I just, I just want to make sure it's not where we could, you know, a large donation come in and, oh, there's this extra piece of equipment or extra thing that we like, we're going to buy it instead of payoff. But I, before we add any additional amenities that aren't in the current plan, I'd like to see the debt pay off. That's just my opinion.
Including the options? Is it optional?
So, okay, if I understand correctly, the current plan, base bid plus alternate, if all of that comes in at 5 million, it's a no-brainer, all of that, the debt, all of that goes, any future gifts, grants that aren't otherwise restricted would go towards paying down the debt. If the bids for the base and the alternates, then if that, they come in above 5 million, then at that time, there'd be future consideration whether or not we allow undesigned, you know, gifts for the pool, or unrestricted gifts for the pool. gifts for the pool, or unrestricted gifts for the pool to be used to do the alternates or to pay down debt. And it would be a decision made at a future time. Is that?
Yes, sir.
We do have one motion on the table, though, and we do need to take action on that. I didn't mention it. This resolution requires 75% approval. So when we do get down to voting, just understand that that's what this requires.
So the, it's not going up to a vote of the public because we're using an established sales tax, like the first time, you know, it went up to a vote?
We did not change the ordinance, we did not change the tax, we did not increase the tax, it's not a new tax, that's why it's, this tax is, already exists for this purpose.
So I mean, it all comes down to, does, I mean, in your opinion, if we want to make that requirement, how do we need to do it?
You'd have to vote no to this item and then have a new motion.
Okay.
Right now, it's been moved to approve Resolution 2023-020, as it is written on item number eight in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Parsons?
No.
Bear?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Okay, so that vote fails. I would entertain another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-020, as stated in the agenda, allowing for the use of not restricted funds and donations towards the early payoff of the debt. Is that?
Second. Eric? I have a motion by Mr. Winters, a second by Dr. Lahr, to approve Resolution 2023-020, stated in the agenda, with a provision requiring unrestricted pool grants and donations, other funding for the pool, to be first used to pay down debt before adding other amenities to the project.
Yes.
Pretty close, I hope.
You got the intent, so.
Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Thumann?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, guys. This has been a long time in the making. We will be going out for bid this week, and I want to express, just take a moment and express my appreciation to the past and present members of the Citizens Advisory Committee that have worked to get us to this point, and as well as all the staff that have put in their blood, sweat, and tears as well. Thank you, guys. Item nine, we have a presentation from Mr. Philip Sutter concerning the possibility of building a hydrogen manufacturing plant in the Alba area. Mr. Sutter, by understanding of this, is that this is probably not something that City Council will take action upon. So I would ask that, you know, just be, you know, brief in your remarks, but bring us up to speed.
Okay. This hydrogen plant is green. You know, you're sitting out here with 800, 900 acres of industrial railroad park, with nothing on it but a rock quarry.
And you understand that's not the city of Alba's?
No.
Okay.
So I am doing a application for a private activity bond, which Drew, I don't know if you had time to look it up, just briefly, okay. It actually is made for you guys, for community development, to do all your projects. It's 3.5% interest, and you guys know about it?
Most private activity bonds are pretty far a few between today to the tax law changes.
This is a brand-new project. I think the state's been doing it. So I joined the task force, the Stetts, Governor of the Stetts, so we put a hydrogen project And it is a, I have to have a sponsor. You guys really have to sponsor it, because I have, you know, I have to have a sponsor to do it, and it has to be the city. I talked to, so I get a 45Q IRS and a 142 IRS. So the 45Q allows me to get $3 per kilogram for production. And it also should take $1 to $2 to manufacture it, to get all my stuff together. So that's an overview of what I'm doing. Too much paperwork. So I also have been with, since we did our deal, I've been with the transportation, pardon the boot, Treasury Department, and we've come up with a plan, and we, I hired Jared Davis in the Oklahoma Public Finance deal, and we're going to use the Bank of Oklahoma, Zach Robinson, to finance it. And it's just kind of a positive deal. I'm not a salesman, but I have put this project together and met with Treasury Department quite a few times, which is right next to the governor. And the hydrogen will be, and it can use it in army tanks, you can use it in airplanes in future deals. And the Treasury Department sent me to Koochie, because they're putting in a new refinery. And it's Southern Rock Energy, and they did all the paperwork and got, I think, $78 million to do the interstructure of it. And so I just want to put one here because I think I have more people that's gone to Northwestern and graduated than anybody here. So I need you guys to sponsor. You have no commitment, you just, you'll have to vote on it. And I'll have to get you the paperwork for it.
So when you say, I guess, how does it tie to, you say sponsor, I'm confused, but I mean, it sounds like it could be a great thing, and but how does it, you know, with this, this is in the city elements, I mean, how does this, what ties Alba to your project besides, I mean, it sounds like it could be a great potential economic development for our area, and I appreciate you coming and speaking on it, it sounds like a great thing, but I'm confused in the aspect of what ties Alba to your project.
Alba gets the benefit from everything from it, from new housing, office space. I'll send all the employees that need sent to a hydrogen school, you know, the Sutter Foundation, we can open up a school here, already at Northwestern.
But what, I guess, what do you need from us to be able to do this?
This is a community private activity bond made for cities. And I think two months ago, it comes open to the public, so anyone can apply for it. And that's why I'm applying. You can apply for it.
So is this a private project or a?
It's a private project, new hydrogen energy. And all you guys are saying is, yeah, we're backing you. And what it does to me is give the Bank of Oklahoma, they can buy this and give me the money to start your, or this project at 3.5, and it goes to the IRS 142, which is a, you don't pay taxes.
So you say, say we're backing it, so for some reason, if this project was to default, something goes wrong, is it the liability of the city?
No liability. Drew will prove that to you when he studies it, and that's what's nice about it. It's just a, you're kind of a road to get me to my point, to get this for you guys. It's, you can, and it's, it's a 45Q that makes it pay out, because the government, Biden administration's going to give you $3 per kilogram, and you can look that up on Biden.
So are you going to the county with it also, or?
Well, county can do it, or you can do it. I just, and Koochie, I can go do it at Koochie, through their foundation, and I've got a copy of all theirs that they did.
So have you met with the economic development through the county yet? Is it?
Don't need any. I did, I talked to Bixler, and he said we got 800, 900 acres, you can do whatever.
I mean, it sounds like a great, I'm just, I said, it sounds like it could be a really, really reliable.
I don't need this, I don't need any. I just need a pathway from you guys or the county.
How about this, Mr. Sutter, if we can have our staff and our local council look into it further and then decide what, what if any action that needs to be brought in front of the council? Will that be all right?
I have no problem with any of it. And if you, I can, you know, I can, I'll send Jared a copy of the attorney that's doing the project, or Drew, as Jared has said, so good luck, and if you guys want it, holler at me. If you don't, we'll see y'all.
Thank you.
And I'm not nervous. Been drinking.
Hell, we could have burned it in. All right, item 10. Steve, Drew, will you see what the particulars are on that, and if it's something we need to work on? I suspect that probably any political subdivision would probably be suitable for that, and if that's the case, the Avar Grand Authority should be able to do it as well, and it may be more applicable there.
Right.
Item 10, discussion and action to approve City Valve Resolution 2023-21. Timeout, before we get there, I got to go back to, I'm just going to jump back to item number eight, and I did, I did thank the committee, but I failed to mention that we have, you know, received between pledges and donations and grants, $3.4 billion. And I really want to express my appreciation to the members of the community that have allowed us to move this project forward in a way that the last time that we had a vote on this, they said, "Do it and do it for less." And so it's going to cost the citizens of Alba, taxpayers, less money to do this now than it was going to cost us back in 2018. So I would have been remiss had I not mentioned the generosity of those families and individuals that have made contributions to our project. So we'll look forward to celebrating them at a later date, for sure. Okay, now I'll move on to number 10. Discussion and action to approve City Valve Resolution 2023-21, resolution of the Alba City Council amending the FY 2023-2024 annual budget for the city of Alba. Steve, I'll let you explain the forestry grant.
So this is something basically that a fire department class for every year, and they typically get it, and so it helps them find the equipment. And this also includes some income for the Alva LSAT, LSTA, City of Alva Library, LSTA technical grant that they got, reaching their money from their budget as well, that's their $5,000 grant they get every year.
So two grants, two pieces of grant revenue that we did put in our budget.
Yes.
That we need to put in our budget. So this is standard budget resolution to account for that.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-021?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2023-021, amendment to the fiscal year 2324 annual budget for the city of Alba. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go back to item 11, and this is the budget resolution that effectively changed, adjusts the capital equipment line item in the airport's budget. So Resolution 2023-022, Resolution, City Council amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget for the city of Alba.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-022?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2023-022. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go back to item 11, and this is the budget resolution that effectively changed, adjusts the capital equipment line item in the airport's budget. So Resolution 2023-022, Resolution, City Council amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget for the city of Alba.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-022?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2023-022. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go back to item 11, and this is the budget resolution that effectively changed, adjusts the capital equipment line item in the airport's budget. So Resolution 2023-022, Resolution, City Council amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 annual budget for the city of Alba.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-022?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer, to approve Resolution 2023-022. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Thumann?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item 12, discussion and action to approve the City Valve Employee Handbook and authorize the City Business Manager to fully implement changes. This has been in front of us before, final revisions have been sent out to everybody. We pull up any part of it you guys have questions about. I entertain discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Valve Employee Handbook and authorize the City Business Manager to fully implement the changes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go back to item eleven. And this is the budget resolution that effectively changed it adjusts the capital equipment line item in the airport's budget. So resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two. Resolution, City Council amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget for the city of Alva.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two-two. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item twelve, discussion in action to approve the city of Alva employee handbook and authorize the city business manager to fully implement changes. This has been in front of us before. Final revisions have been sent out to everybody. We pull up any part of it you guys have questions about. I entertain discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Alva employee handbook and to authorize the city business manager to fully implement the changes.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Bowman to approve city of Alva handbook, employee handbook and authorize the manager to implement the changes. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right, item thirteen is discussion in action to approve the mayor's recommendation of Dr. Callie Mossberg to fulfill the unexpired term of Jay Randles on the Alva Hospital Authority expiring in October twenty twenty-four. Mr. Randles been on the the board for not quite a full term. He replaced somebody else that had an unexpired term. So he's kind of in the middle of terms. But the Chairman Gassford had reached out to Dr. Mossberg about filling out that opening. And Dr. Mossberg is willing to do so, and therefore that is my recommendation.
And make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation of Dr. Callie Mossberg to fill the unexpired term of Jay Randles on the Alva Hospital Authority expiring in October twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second from Mr. Bowman to approve Dr. Callie Mossberg to fulfill the unexpired term of Jay Randles on the Alva Hospital Authority expiring in October twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion?
Did he resign or?
He resigned.
Okay.
Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item fourteen is discussion in action to declare a surplus fifty old lighting fixtures and fifty light globes from the Alva Regional Airport. These are old lights. They're taking up space. We need the space. So we need to declare a surplus so we can get rid of them.
And make a motion to declare a surplus fifty old lighting fixtures and fifty light globes from the Alva Regional Airport.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to declare a surplus fifty old lighting fixtures and fifty lighting, fifty light globes from the airport. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item sixteen, discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to twenty-five OS three oh seven B four to discuss pending class action litigation and pursuant to twenty-five OS three oh seven B one to discuss hiring appointment and or promotion of city of Alva personnel.
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to enter into executive session.
So these two items, are we legally required to, do we talk about executive session? Or is it just we can talk about it?
We can.
So we're not. We could talk about it in open meeting. There's nothing that keeps us from it. Or are we legally required to talk about it in that?
We can talk about it in executive session. And in order to determine whether or not it's an open session item, there should be a question of the council members in executive session to make that determination. No, we don't have to.
It's just good practice when it's personnel.
I said, we.
Because not everybody wants their.
I think.
Employment out there.
I think it's resolutions.
You want me to sign now?
It's not gonna be too long. It's up to you guys. I don't wanna hold all you up. So it's, you don't think it's gonna be that long.
You might wanna get them signed.
Let's get them.
You never know. Sometimes they're five minutes, sometimes they're four hours.
All right, I appreciate it.
If you're discussing possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can we go ahead and call the vote on the executive session? That's still pending.
We're having discussion.
Well, that's why I guess. You know, if it sets us up to we we can't, because if we talk about it in a session, it opens us up. Our lawsuit, talking about the personnel issue.
I know if I was an employee and they started talking about my stuff, employment record, I would be upset. Unless it.
Heather or.
A determination was made and then it comes up. Because as an employee, that's my private eye of the company. I'll have to sign even in the city of Alva. Just like, I mean, everywhere I've worked. Employment records are supposed to be confidential. And still goes with their employees in the city.
All right, did you get all that straightened out?
Yeah.
Heather, we.
Sure.
By the way.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Brooks?
For Alvin Brooks. So who would he be talking to or one of the, either the line counsel.
Dowling. Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Team is action. Huh?
Camera on.
Are you ready?
You didn't mismatch. Item nineteen is action regarding city of Alva personnel.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to create a new position, Assistant Public Works Director at grade twelve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Beer, a second by Mr. Winters to authorize the city business manager to establish an Assistant Public Works Director position at grade twelve. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bear?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right, item twenty is new business. There's nothing that meets the definition of new business. Item twenty-one is remarks and inquiries by council members.
I have one I forgot to mention earlier. Jody Bradford asked me to let everybody know that they're doing the ribbon cutting Friday, ten twenty, from twelve to twelve thirty for the new, oh, okay, welcome home hotel. That's right across like the old hotel that was been closed down. Eight hundred.
Two eighty-one and line.
Yeah, eight hundred Oklahoma Boulevard. So there's a ribbon cutting if you would. Go stop by.
I've actually had somebody call me to ask me about, said that they heard we were putting the legal, legal immigrants from the other states up in that hotel.
No. It's a true hotel. It's a true hotel. So ribbon cutting on Friday.
Got the same phone call. I called their attorney. You believe attorneys. That's not what they're doing. Any other inquiries or remarks? All right, we will adjourn city council meeting and open the regular Alva Utility Authority meeting. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Lark?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
All right, item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy-three cents and payroll expenses of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item four, or excuse me, item five, discussion in action to approve the lowest best base bid to conduct water line relocation for the seven hundred and eight hundred blocks of Locust Street. Steve just hopped in here anytime, but essentially we we opened bids last week. And they were pretty high. Three hundred and twenty-some thousand.
That's the lowest bid.
Or excuse me, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand was the the lowest bid. I will say though that they they bid more than the project for just the seven hundred, eight hundred blocks. Our priority is getting the seven hundred block done. And with the, I guess between talking with the with Steve and the department and the engineers, the recommendation is to reject this bid, number one. We did not budget three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. But we believe that there's an opportunity to take our staff, build that out to reap and self-perform the project and contract out what we can't do. And basically, our obligation is to complete a seventy-five thousand dollar project with a thirteen thousand dollar match. So we we feel like rather than have a turnkey, we're in a better spot to self-perform it and get those two blocks done, get the street put back in and all that after the after the water line is relocated. And not have another two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to have to figure out where to come up with it from. So is that?
Yeah, so when we when we sent this out for bids, besides fact we bid too much square or meter feet, the original plan for Locust Street is that we were gonna self-perform as much as we could. When it came time to send this out for bids, we didn't have the personnel to self-perform. And so we made sure that was in there for them, for the contractor to be able to do what we couldn't do, which is basically everything. Now that the water department's back up and functioning and the new equipment, like the the Mini-X, makes putting in water line really easy and handy. So so we feel like we can now self-perform more than we could a month ago.
It's the same project we self-performed on Mill Street.
Yeah. I'd make a motion to reject all bids.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mrs. Beer to reject all bids for the water line relocation for the seven hundred and eight hundred blocks of Locust Street. Is there any further discussion?
To clarify, with the rejection of these bids and the moving to self-performance, the plan is is to still proceed with the self-performance in the near future.
That was my question, when will that start?
I'm gonna say as soon as we get these water lines tied in down there and that kind of frees up our focus, then like I said, we got the equipment, we got, we actually have some pipe that everyone can start using.
Okay.
For the next week or two.
Perfect.
Any further discussion?
What I'm gonna reject is, I just had a quick question, do we require them to provide us with a bid bond when we go up and sit after this?
It's all in the bid packet.
Okay.
Anything else? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
All right, item number six is discussion in action to approve contract with Myers Engineering for the twenty twenty-three FAP water system improvements at a cost of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. This is the amount that was in the FAP loan documents. It hasn't changed. It's the contract is in your packet. You reviewed it. It's stand, I assume you reviewed it, Drew. It is standard with what our other contracts with with Myers have been. And in order for them to get to work on it, we gotta approve the contract.
I'd make a motion to approve the contract with Myers Engineering for the twenty twenty-three FAP water systems improvement at a cost of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters, a second from Mr. Bowman to approve the contract with Myers Engineering for the twenty twenty-three FAP water system improvement at a cost of four hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Is there any further discussion?
I did have a question on that. Looking at just through the information that they're hourly rates, is that something, do we ever? I know that we use Myers, it seems like for about a lot of our projects. Do we ever look into, just to make sure that's on scope with competitors of theirs or is there, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, it's consistent. I mean, we, Myers isn't the only engineering group that we use. It's it's consistent.
Okay.
We've had that discussion many, many times over.
And in fact, we're probably.
Being charged less.
We're probably being charged less. Because I mean, it's similar to the discussion we had last month about the the bond council. I mean, they don't send us a bill when we call. They 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 contract the projects and and that's. But they're always. We we can. We we can, if council wants to take action at a different meeting.
No, no, I just, I don't, those, for me, I mean, I, being a new council, I I don't see those numbers. I haven't seen them whole, so I don't, I don't know what's considered, you know, good or bad or whatever. So I just didn't know if it's something that's that we occasionally just take a look at to make sure it's on. So I'm I'm good with it, but just just curious sometimes.
All right, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Item seven is new business. We don't have anything that meets the definition of new business. So we will adjourn Utility Authority. Now called order the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Lark?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bear?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven dollars and sixty-five cents and payroll expenses of nineteen thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Winters and a second by Mrs. Beer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and consideration and take appropriate action, including but not limited to approval, denial, amendment, revision, or conditional approval in whole or part approving a resolution authorizing the Alva Economic Development Authority, the authority to issue its sales tax revenue note, Series 2023, and the aggregate principal amount $1,675,000 for the note. Receiving bids and authorizing the note to be sold on a competitive basis to the lowest